All right, good evening. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to the Stanford Planning Board Meeting of August 16, 2023. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear anything that is being said and look at the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you were unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask the proponent of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or the planning board. Please note that any rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public portion, public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no public, no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at his, at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public hearing. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, the public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Stanford subdivision, site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and the planning, and in the planning and development department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what's happening, and we welcome public participation. All right, we'll jump right into it. New business file J-30-30, 19 Bodwell Street. Jamie, you want to orient us on this, and then we'll...
I'm actually letting Erin take over my speech roles tonight. Don't feel super hot, so she's gonna help me out and do most of the reading for us tonight.
All right, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify, it's actually J-30-130, should be. So, sorry about that. Okay, the applicant is requesting a minor site plan and minor subdivision approval to construct an eight-unit condo building and a freestanding single-family dwelling along with associated site improvements at 19 Bodwell Street. Eight of the units are proposed to be affordable housing with one unit being market rate. I'm not sure if the applicant has decided yet which unit that is, but that would be up for discussion potentially. They are requesting a waiver of parking requirements. They have proposed that nine total spaces to be located to the rear of the buildings. This should leave one space per unit. The ownership of the parking will be retained by the 19 Bodwell Street Condominium Association, which they will be forming, and rented to the owners or tenants on a monthly basis. So, a normal parking requirement for the number of units and bedrooms that they are proposing would be 14, and they're requesting a waiver down to nine. They basically have met every other condition that the site plan review committee had discussed as far as storm water management with bio-retention cells and plantings, the fire access and safety with sprinklers and Knox box are shown, and I believe they've met the water district's requirements as well, although we don't have an official response yet from them, so that may still be a condition to approval just to receive their sign-off on the updated site plans.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here tonight?
Thank you for having me. My name is Drew Olahowski with Haley Ward. I'm the agent for this project. The applicant is Kara Wilbear. She's here also and available for questions. Did you guys want me to just give another brief overview? I think Erin covered it mostly there. Anything specific I could jump into?
I mean, I think you've covered it pretty well, so if you want to just get into sort of what you, just a quick overview of what you're asking us for, and I'm sure we'll have some questions.
Okay. So, as Erin said, we're seeking minor site plan and minor subdivision approval. This is nine units, as Erin said. We have one single-family unit and eight multifamily units in the other building. We have nine parking spaces proposed in the back of the lot. We also have some open space area as well as storm water management features. We are looking at all public utilities, both sewer and water. There's no onsite utility disposals here. For storm water, we're looking at a bio-retention cell in the rear of the property, as well as roof drip-edge filters along both of the buildings. Snow storage, we have some room designated in the backyard for that as well, and the gardening area. We have provided a landscaping plan. I think it's pretty robust with plantings all around the parking and frontage of the property. And I think that covers some of the more general items. If you guys had any questions.
Okay. We'll get to the questions after the public hearing then. See what the board asks. All right, so moving to the, I now declare the public hearing open. Open it up to anybody who'd like to speak, anyone else who would like to speak for this Anybody on Zoom? I don't see anybody. All right, anybody who'd like to speak against this project? Anybody who'd like to speak neither for nor against, but would like to make a comment? Right? If there are no comments, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we can start talking about, right on from the public, planning board side.
I think I bring it up every project. I'm going to bring it up again. I am really starting to get opposed to eliminating parking spots in the downtown area because we keep approving apartments with one spot only. Most families do not have one parking spot. That means they park elsewhere. We have very limited parking downtown. That means the cars park elsewhere, especially in the winter time when there's no on-street parking. So, at some point, something has to give. Either the town has to, the city has to do something and provide parking, or we can't continue to grant waivers to one spot per unit on every single project.
I have a question.
Are these condos?
I believe so, yes.
So, the owners are going to be owning each individual unit?
Yep, that's right.
They're not renting, they're actually going to own it?
Yep.
Okay.
Did I hear they're affordable?
Was that affordable, you said?
Yeah, affordable.
I think one of, one of the units is.
One?
Yep.
I think it's the flip side.
One is market rate.
One is market rate, the rest are affordable.
Hi, I'm Kara Wilberness. See you guys. There's eight affordable and one market rate, and we're gonna make the final determination on which is which as we go through the sales process, because people have to qualify. And so, there may be a good, you know, family or tenant that we want, and so we might have to, you know, select the market rate based on how that all goes. So, we're trying to maintain some flexibility, so we don't lose somebody just because they're over the AMI requirement.
I just guess I'd never heard of affordable condo units, but... So, the requirement for parking is 14 spaces, right?
That is correct. I don't have the exact breakdown right in front of me. It's on their site plan. I think if you were to look at the size of the units, it would be maybe less of an issue because these units are on the smaller size and potentially would be just single, single person occupied.
Are they all one bedroom?
There's one bedroom, four-one bedrooms, two studios, and two two-bedrooms. And to your point, we expect it might be young couples who share a vehicle, or singles, or retirees who might share vehicles. So, they are smaller units. If you have two cars, you're probably not maybe gonna be interested, and that's okay because we only have nine total, and we're trying to provide an option for people who are looking for a walkable lifestyle, taking advantage of all the great amenities you have in downtown Stanford. And, you know, the, the tension was between parking and providing nice outdoor space as part of the units. And so, we felt based on, you know, understanding that there's a lot of population that only has one car, that it was a reasonable trade-off to make, to give people that, that outdoor amenity.
At site plan, there was some question about whether they would be assigned, each unit would be assigned one parking spot, or it'd be like a free-for-all?
Yeah, there's some, some language in the draft condo documents that explains how it would work. It's basically unbundling parking, so instead of adding the price of parking onto each unit, which is expensive, it basically makes it so tenants who want parking can pay for it. And if you don't need parking, you're not paying for that premium. So, basically, it's first come, first served, or every, every unit has a space that they can have access to, and if they don't want to use it, it can go into a pool, and people can rent them, the extra spaces.
Okay.
We did review the language, and the language is such that each unit is guaranteed one spot, and if they choose not to use it, it goes into a pool. One of the other, one of the other owners can, can temporarily pay for that spot, but if they go to sell that unit and the new owner wants a parking spot, they would get the parking spot, and the person that was borrowing it from them loses their spot. So, it is written so that each unit is guaranteed one spot.
I have a question. If these units are condos, I saw there was a question about like a homeowner association. I know we talked about this last meeting as well. Is there a, a plan, or any...
So, we've received the draft document for homeowners association. I think the applicant is still working out some more details and fleshing it out. We've requested that as one of our conditions, as far as just giving us the final draft document for the homeowners association.
Excellent. And I would love to see what the parking situation would actually look like on a map. So, when I look at the address, the, do we, do you have a map? That'd be awesome.
I have a paper copy. I think we can bring it up on Google Drive. It was on there. Can you pass this around?
Sounded worse than it is.
It sounded worse than it is. No, that shouldn't be. Log into this one enough. Come on. Got it.
Do you want to pass this down? Sorry, so other people can see. I had another question while we pull that up, or we wait till they pull that up, that's fine.
Okay. Then can you, are you able to help this computer bed? Thank you. Okay. I should be able to navigate.
There it is.
My laptop has the download.
I think it was just on the porches.
So, we're just discussing the layout of the parking. There is one parking space that has been identified for handicap parking. That would be the closest to the single-family unit.
Over here.
Mm-hmm. There, there's a striped aisle next to it. Again, because the parking spaces are not assigned per unit, it would just be available for the first person that needs an accessible handicap parking space.
Looking at this map, I do want to note an observation that I have, and the parking looks really tight. It looks very tight. But then I have another question in regards to lighting for safety for those who do select or opt-in, I guess, for a parking spot. Curious on what that looks like if you plan to have poles, or if you're gonna have it transcending from the, from the building structure.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it residential in character, so we have porch lights. That'll be on timers, so that there'll be some lighting in the back.
Is, is this a, is this a single uni, a single-level building?
No. There's, the, the larger building is a two-story building on the front portion, the main massing, and then it drops down to one story on that back portion that you can see on the plan, and then the, the single family is a story and a half.
What's, what's the plan for, I think we, I think we have a few things we just gotta kind of hash out. You know, Jace is jumping at the bit over here, but, um, snow, not snow removal, I see, snow storage, the trash disposal, what's, what's your plan for that?
Totes.
No dumpster?
No. Again, we're trying to keep residential in character, not have this be sort of a commercial feeling space, so the idea is totes.
So, so trash, town does not pick up trash from any buildings above our three-unit?
Correct. So, they would still need to contract with a private waste hauler.
Each unit, or the condo?
The condo association could set it up. Mm-hmm.
So, how, how are we gonna store trash?
In totes.
Is it stored in the unit?
Well, there's totes, they get lined up outside, and then they get taken to the curb, or the trash hauler will grab them, but totes are kind of a common solution in a more, you know, urban environment where it's residential in character versus trying to have a dumpster and like a big truck and backing up noises, and I mean, I don't know anyone who wants to live next to that.
All right, I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand. What do you mean by a tote? When I think of a tote, I'm thinking of like a plastic bin that I...
No, you're talking, she's talking about the trash bins.
Like a rolling dumpster, like a rolling trash bin?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what you mean?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the rolling totes.
Okay.
Yep.
Back to the parking, you said that if somebody elects not to have, well, first off, everybody is assigned a parking space, well, gets a parking space.
Yep.
If they elect not to have, you said it goes back in the pool, and they can sell it to somebody else?
Or lend it to someone else.
Oh, sorry, lend it, yes, lend it to somebody else. Does that person who, let's say Apartment A, do they get the money for like, you know, lend it to somebody else?
It goes in the condo association pot for maintenance or any other costs they need for ongoing maintenance.
And the, and the parking spaces are, do they, do they have to pay additional for parking spaces when they rent the, the unit, or...
Sorry, what's that? I just didn't hear you.
They pay, they pay per parking space. So, the draft, the current draft of the HOA documents is suggesting that the condo association retains ownership over all common elements, parking being one of them, and then is, has the option to rent for, currently it's $20 a month, obviously that could change, to the tenants. Their plan is to offer one per unit, but if a tenant in one unit does not want a parking space, the condo association retains the parking spaces, and the next person on the waiting list has the option to rent the second space for an additional $20 a month.
Is there a penalty for, let's say, somebody has visitors, and they park in someone's parking space even that they're not assigned, so is there a penalty for that, and how do you guys go about finding out who the perpetrator is?
You'd be parking on the street or elsewhere.
Well, saying like, you know, so somebody comes, like, you know, somebody doesn't care, just parks the parking space that's not supposed to be there.
That's their problem to deal with. With towing, if they so want to. But, I mean, so, I don't mean to pick on you guys with the, the parking, because, you know, I voted, approved, previously approved one for a lot, a lot bigger apartment complex, but at some point, I can't keep giving the waivers for the parking spaces, especially for the bigger projects. I mean, we're going to run out of parking options for people.
So, we actually, the Department of Public Works has in the work, in the works right now, or starting soon, a parking study that would include and encompass downtown, so I imagine that we'll have some actions coming out of that, whether that's we reduce our required parking requirement because they're not in line with the current market, or we designate a certain area for parking. I'm not sure what the result will be, but I think it will be easier to make your decision on these kinds of waivers once we have those facts. For now, it does seem like we've waived them before, and at this point, she's, she, the applicant is offering the notice to the, to the tenants, you know, like they know what they're signing up for, which is kind of what we required of the Centene Trust building also. They would put it in their rental contract, or put it in your condo association documents, so they know they're not under some assumption that they have free access to all parking.
So, go ahead, Jamie.
I think in her packet, she also supplied some information about another similar project that utilizes less parking. And, and I'll just back up what Erin said earlier. Some of these units are, are small, so it's very likely that, that probably half of these units are gonna be occupied by a single person. They were, some of these units are, are pretty, pretty small.
Yep. Can I jump in with a couple of comments? I just, I see three things here that I actually do like about this project. One, of course, is that, you know, you're giving people a chance of affordable housing and a chance to, to own their own unit. So, affordable housing and a chance to build some equity is very good. Also, talking about the parking too, I know there was an allowance for, I believe, some EVs and some solar as well, some solar cells on top of the building, so it's good to see that in the center of town, and it's good to see that in the new development, because that's, that's the future of cars, I think. We need to make an allowance for that. And of course, the third thing I like about this, what I really like, is that it's investing in the downtown. You know, it's new development, it's redevelopment, which is the key to, you know, the success of Stanford. To have this, to have these new structures built in the downtown is really, really a plus.
Thank you. It is, I think it's hard to do these smaller sites, these infill sites, because of the parking, and so we worked really hard to try to find a balance, knowing the market for the units in particular. I think it, it all worked out on the site plan where we could provide all the things we're hoping to provide. And, yeah, and I, I can't take credit for the EV charger and the solar, that's main state housing. It's part of the program that we're using to finance the project, so, but we're happy to, to do that part.
So, I have a couple of questions. One, I think is more of a staff question. What, 14 is what's required by, by the stat, by the standard?
And on that note, I was just doing some calculations. I actually think it's 16.
Okay, so while we can waive, there's a limitation on what we can waive, what, I know we just did this with Centene Trust, but I don't have it in front of me, the calculation.
Yeah, it's, there's two instances that the board can waive parking. One is 30% if they are reusing an existing building. This application is not. The other instance is if they show or can prove that this is, you know, in line with the market, has been done elsewhere in the region or by the same developer.
Okay, so it's just shy of a... Hmm? Could you just help, all right, so I'm a little confused on the fact it's a condo, which typically it's owned by the individual living or the, the person living there. I won't call them a tenant because they're truly a condo. How, if it's affordable housing, how do we, I, I just, I'm having a hard time making the connection between affordable housing and ownership in a, a unit, like a condo typically is?
It's, it's just an affordably priced ownership unit, so they're gonna buy it, just like a condo. There's just a price cap.
Okay.
This is being subsidized by Main Housing, though, isn't it? You're getting a grant or some funding for this?
A subsidy, a per-unit subsidy to help, like, basically buy down the price.
All right, does the board have any other, any other questions or concerns? Are we, I know the one, kind of the one big sticking point, and to Jace's point, this wasn't to pick on you, this is just the fact. This is an ongoing problem we need to...
I've brought it up on at least two other projects, but they're a lot bigger in scale. That would create a lot bigger issues, but I just continue to feel the need to say it because at some point, I don't know how mu, much more I can waive on bigger projects, especially.
But if they're renting the unit, and they know they only get one parking space, they can decide to accept it or leave.
Yeah, but if, if every single apartment building that we approve only has one parking space, what other option do they have?
Park on the street.
So many. We have like 80 years of single-family house supply and like hardly any sort of infill smaller units, so there's been a mismatch of supply and demand for so long that there's, I think, a lot of pent-up demand for these smaller units, people have one car, people who want to be walkable. So, I think it's gonna be a while before we run out of people who are able to, to take up these smaller units in town, for what that's worth.
But I think for this project, where they're limiting, limiting them to one space per unit, what's the big deal?
I also think, given the size of the condos, is a huge proponent to the parking, as in your targeted market essentially would be single and/or maybe not even have a vehicle. I think you mentioned before, they would basically bike or walk. So, I think it, it makes sense.
I, I mean, I think it's, it's probably, it's worth the risk here, because I think, and I know Jace isn't really, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I don't think you're really saying that you're necessarily against this, it's more of the, just the recognizing that there's a risk here, and if we keep doing this, we're gonna keep imposing this risk. This risk...
These are smaller, and so, so I do understand that, but every time we don't provide adequate parking for it... But every time we don't provide adequate parking for an apartment complex or housing, you know, and so forth, we end up with all these on-street parking. Some of these roads that you drive down, the side streets, you can barely even get through them because of all the on-street parking. Then on top of that, during a winter parking ban, you, you have the downtown, the mill town, uh, the midtown mall parking lot completely full. None of the businesses have adequate parking because of now you have people parking off-street because of the parking ban in their parking lot. Then you also have the backstreet, the, uh, previous backstreet grill parking lot also full. And so with, there's, we're competing with parking for both businesses and for housing units, and, uh, at some point, something's going to have to give.
I agree with you, but if this information is going to be laid out in their agreement, then it's going to be no surprise.
Yeah, no, um, I'm o- I'm okay with approving the, um, waiver for this project.
Yeah.
But.
Going forward.
Yeah.
As we, absolutely.
I'm going to bring it up every time a waiver comes.
All right, so to move this one along, because I think we're all, we're all good here. Any other issues?
Kick the can down the road. Kick the can down the road till next time.
That's not kicking the can, that's just doesn't, not necessarily for this. All right, so we have findings of facts on this?
Yes, we do, yeah. Okay, great. Okay. Findings of fact for file J thirty-one thirty nineteen Bodwell Street. Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-one pollution, the standard is met because the layout for the proposed development takes into consideration existing topography and features of the site. Site grading is designed to minimize excessive cuts or fills and blends in with surrounding properties.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed seven zero.
Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-eight, impact on aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habit, tat, and shoreline access. The standard is met because the proposed development shall not negatively impact aesthetics, open spaces, historic, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Seven zero.
Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-nine, conformance with other regulations, the standard is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable and land use regulations outlined in chapters two seventy-five and two eighty.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-six, recreation, open space areas, the standard is met because the proposed plans demonstrate that recreation and open space requirements have been met.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Motion, uh, all in favor? Seven zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven A, utilization of the site, the standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Okay, so our first group, two seventy-five dash ten thirty-five, traffic conditions, two eighty dash ten seven B, access to the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven C, access into the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven D, internal vehicular circulation, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven E, pedestrian circulation. The standard is met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Second group, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-two, sufficient water, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-three, impact on existing water supply, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-four, soil erosion, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-six, sewage disposal, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-two, impact on groundwater quality or quantity, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-five, storm water management, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-seven, phosphorus impacts on great ponds, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven F, storm water management, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven G, erosion control, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven H, water supply, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven I, sewage disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven J, utilities, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven K, natural features, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven L, grad, groundwater protection, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven M, exterior lighting, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven O, landscaping, and two eighty dash sixteen seven R, buffering. The standard is met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards and any requested alterations from the site plan review committee.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Third group, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-one, impact on water quality and shoreline, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-three, floodplain management, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-four, identification of freshwater wetlands, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-eight, spaghetti lots, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven P, shoreline relationship, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven S, airport encroachment. The standard is not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development, the standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Group four, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-seven, solid waste, and two eighty dash sixteen seven N, solid waste disposal. The standard is met. Solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
And lastly, group five, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty, financial and technical capacity, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven Q, I believe, technical and financial capacity. Standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Right, that's all of those. Good job.
Thanks.
All right, so we have a draft motion.
Yes, we do. The planning board, uh, suggestion motion, that the planning board accepts the information in the July thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three summary report, grants the requested waivers, and finds that the proposed minor site plan and minor subdivision for file J thirty dash one thirty to construct an eight-unit condo building, a freestanding single-family dwelling, and associated site improvements at nineteen Bodwell Street has satisfied the requirements of Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance and Article six of the subdivision ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One, by September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, please provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, address all concerns raised by the Sanford Water District. Just to make sure we get those on record. Two, submit a final draft of the homeowners association documents. Three, standard conditions of approval. Number two, performance guarantee. Number four, signed recorded plot. Number five, state agency permits and approvals. Number six, inspection fiasco. Number seven, pre-construction meeting. Number eight, landscaping performance guarantee. And number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good job and good luck.
All right, so moving on to item two, new business file, R fifteen dash sixty, fifteen oh eight Main Street. Erin, are you going to, could you please orient us on this one?
Yeah, absolutely. The applicant is seeking preliminary subdivision approval to construct five multifamily apartment buildings consisting of three two-story sixteen-unit buildings and two three-story twenty-four-unit buildings, along with residential amenities and associated site improvements on the rear portion of the property located at fifteen oh eight Main Street. This is preliminary site plan and preliminary, sorry, major site plan and preliminary major subdivision. Just as a note, this area that will be developed is, um, proposed to be split from a current lot with frontage on Main Street that abuts the applicant's other development happening. It will then be merged, uh, combined with those parcels in order to create the proper access through that existing development which has access off of Patriots Lane to the newly proposed ninety-six units multifamily development.
All right.
Want me to go on?
Oh, we'll, we'll let, we'll go to the developer, or the applicant before we start asking questions.
Hello again. Um, once again, I'm Drew Olahowski with Haley Ward. I'm the agent for this project. The applicant is Scarborough Woods LLC. Um, I believe the applicant is on the Zoom call right now also, in case he wants to help with any questions. So as Erin said, we are proposing a ninety-six unit multifamily development at fifteen oh eight Main Street. The applicant is currently in the process of splitting off a portion of the existing property at fifteen oh eight Main Street. He also owns the two adjacent lots on Patriots Lane, which he's looking to combine, um, these three lots into one large lot. It is the, the same type of development on these two adjacent, adjacent lots, um, all multifamily development. So this new lot will be a common scheme with those. I believe since this project was last presented to the board, um, the biggest layout change was reducing the number of buildings from six to five. We also now have some three-story buildings rather than all two-story. The goal of this was just to help preserve the, um, natural landscape in this area, as well as to provide more open space, um, for the tenants' use. So getting into some of the details, um, we are proposing to utilize the public sewer and water system. We are looking to tie in to the adjacent lots, um, through their existing parking lots to access those utilities. Stormwater, we have several, um, soil filters located throughout the property. I believe we have four of them. We are also going to be required to obtain a DEP site law permit for this project, so that we'll really dig into the stormwater details as well. As far as open space goes, at this point, we are proposing a, a patio area up in the top corner here, as well as just some open lawn area around that. We also have a clubhouse over here, and then some existing trails around the site that we will be looking to maintain as well. I think it's also worth noting that there is quite a bit of open space on the two adjacent lots. So I think when you look at all of those combined, um, I think we have more than enough open space from what's required. Landscaping. Our goal for the landscaping was really to match what was on the two adjacent lots. We felt that they had adequate landscaping already, so we felt it would be, um, normal to try to just match what they had, keep it looking uniform. In discussions with the town staff, it does sound like we will need to bolster that up a bit, probably add some more street trees, some foundation planting, some stuff like that. I think one of the biggest issues with this project at this point is going to be the traffic, um, which I'm sure we'll speak more about later in this discussion. At this point, we are looking at under a hundred trips generated from this development, um, including the two adjacent lots, so a traffic movement permit through the DOT wouldn't be required. So at this point, we were just looking at doing a local Sanford traffic study, which we think would be adequate for this project. I think that covers most of the issues at this point, so I'd open it up to questions or the public hearing.
We'll go to the public hearing first, and then we'll, I'm, I'm sure we'll have questions. All right, so I'll now declare the public hearing open. Uh, I will, um, like to hear from anybody who would like to speak for this project. Right, anyone who would like to speak against this project?
We had an emailed, um, letter of concern that we want to read into the record. We actually forgot to print it, but, uh, Erin's gonna read it from the Google Drive from that computer.
You got ahead of me because I saw those. There's three abutter notes, a butter comments in the file, so.
Correct. Um, so I'll just read all three of them out as they came in. This is from Jennifer Dion. Dear Planning Board, I attended the meeting last night. Sorry, this is from May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Dear Planning Board, I attended the meeting last night by telephone, though I was not sure how to make comment the reason for the email. Comment is Ari King fifteen oh eight Main Street project. Between the two King projects on Patriot Lane, apartments on top of Hill closest to Main Street, and the sixty-plus townhouses to be built at the bottom of Patriot Lane, the traffic, in my opinion, is already not safe for a neighborhood. Many vehicles race up and down Patriot Lane, using it as a cut-through from Jagger Mill and Main, or vice versa. There are children that walk home from school, the bus stop at Jagger Mill to the apartments on top of the Patriot or to Rock Pond Estates. Families walking with strollers and dog walkers. If sidewalks are not a thought for Patriot Lane, then another solution, solution such as speed bumps might be a consideration. As a resident of Boulder Lane from Rock Pond Estates, I wrote to King Ari with my Patriot Lane safety concerns. King Ari noted Patriot Lane is, is not a private road and suggested writing to the city. I wrote to the city regarding the matter, suggesting sidewalks or speed bumps perhaps are removable in the winter. The town stated Patriot Lane is a private road and they would not be able to address. Not sure who installed the twenty-five mile per hour signs recently, thank you. Unfortunately, the signs have not stopped with the racers. Based on the discussions last night, it is my understanding the city is looking to create this area as a neighborhood of Sanford. I am very much for the development, but would like not to forego the safety of the Patriot Lane community. If the city and developer could discuss the Patriot Lane traffic concerns in more detail, possibly adding sidewalks and/or speed bumps to Patriot Lane as part of the new project or existing ones, and confirm Patriot Lane ownership, along with the comment from a gentleman at the meeting about right turn only at both Main Street and Jagger Mill intersections to assist with the safety of the community, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jen Dion, Boulder Lane. The second, uh, abutter comment comes from the same abutter, Jennifer Dion. On Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three, good afternoon, I hope that I am able to write to you and the site plan slash planning board with positive feedback one day. I am writing again to make the site plan and planning board members aware how unsafe Patriot Lane can be during inclement weather such as today. Cars racing up and down, squealing tires on the wet pavement. Maybe because of how fast they are coming down the hill from Main Street or turning into the street from Jagger Mill Road, or for the fun of it. In the site plan slash planning board meetings, it is continuously mentioned that they consider this a neighborhood of Sanford. The street must have sidewalks installed for the safety of its neighbors. The neighborhood kids are walking up and down the street when the rain stopped today, and neighbors are walking to wherever they may need to go. I am afraid of what will happen, like the heart-wrenching event last week in one of South Sanford's neighborhoods. Please forward to the powers that be to make them aware of the continued concerns. If the planning board is not the correct city department that would receive this note, please forward to the correct department. Your time is much appreciated. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Jen Dion of Boulder Lane. The third, I'll read it from here, actually. The third abutter comment is of a different matter, received Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Hi, Alex, we would like to express the need for a seven-foot-tall privacy fence to be installed by the developer. This would inhibit people from trespassing onto the golf course and wooded area along the shared property line. The fence should be placed a few feet south beyond the existing stone wall. Our concern is to preserve the aesthetic appeal and serenity our patrons enjoy at Pine Hollow Little Par Three Golf Course. If this can be read on our behalf during the next planning board meeting, that would be appreciated. Best regards, Steve and Mark. What's that? LaRoe, Steve LaRoe, thank you. Those are the public comments that we received, uh, from staff.
All right, thank you. Just to make sure, uh, is there anybody else who would like to speak against this project? Is there anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against, but would like to make a comment? All right, hearing none. I will declare the public hearing closed, and we'll bring it to the planning board to start our discussion.
I have a quick question in regards to your comment, um, about one hundred trips for traffic. Where did you get that information from?
Uh, we use the, a software called ITE Trip Gen Software. It's the DOT standard for generating trips based on different uses. So I think for this situation, you'd enter in the, the total number of units, and then it'll generate, like, peak hour trips, peak AM trips, PM trips, all the, all the different categories, which I think may be included in the traffic section of our submission.
So that number only takes into account the people who live on Patriots, not those who would use it as a. the people who live on Patriots, not those who would use it as a, for lack of a better term, like a throwaway or a shortcut?
It only takes into account the new units they are proposing, not the existing units that they're sharing the driveways with, not the, oh, it does?
We did, yeah. All three of those lots.
Sorry, disregard. It includes the six apartment buildings they're sharing the driveways with, but it doesn't include the three other apartment buildings on an adjacent lot, the one kind of that circles in front of, that used to be a laundromat, the ones across the street, or any of the condos down the street. It's just that one project that it includes.
Okay.
Also, it's like the additional traffic to come through there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to clarify, there's, we're putting five units in, five buildings, but you did traffic turn calculations on those, plus all of the other units that are existing that are connecting, where you have a connecting driveway?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
It's a total of 176 units. Who owns this road, Patriot Lane? Is it, is that city or state?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Who owns Patriot Lane? Is that city or state?
We have been, we as in Matt Preventure, has spent a large portion of this last week trying to actually determine ownership of Patriots Lane. The original approval shows it as private. Most of the documents in city possession show it as private. There was a deed recorded by a previous owner that confuses things, that I don't think ever went through. So for a road to become public, the city council or the town council at the time would have had to accepted it as a public street. Matt asked city clerk Sue Cody to do some historical research, and nobody has been able to come up internally with any documents that say it's a public street. And that will have an impact further on that I think Matt's gonna discuss at some point. But as of right now, it's believed to be private. Unless the applicant has something we don't have, it's, at the best we can tell, it's private.
Does the city plow that street?
We do. The city council actually just started talking about, we plow many streets that are privately owned. We're starting a conversation on addressing that problem.
So if it were state or city-owned, who would be in charge of sidewalks? And installing them and maintaining them?
Yeah, that'd be a good question. I mean, typically, through this process, I mean, you've seen it with subdivisions like new roads. We would request some type of sidewalk connectivity, so because this is older and it wasn't there to begin with, it's kind of, it's an outlier. It's, we don't deal with that much. We don't kind of go back and put in sidewalks very often. We don't have to deal with that. Having said that, connectivity within Patriot Lane makes sense, but on either end, whether it be Jagger Mill or Main Street, there's really no pedestrian facilities. So it's not, it's not a great idea to send pedestrians in a direction where they have no place to go in the end. So. But it does make sense. Like I said, like the developments, the communities along Patriot Lane, it makes sense to connect those. They have driveways within themselves, like, what are they, Rock Pond Road and, you know, everything, yeah, everything is associated with like the project down the hill. They all have sidewalks going along their, their private kind of dead-end roads, but there's nothing along Patriot Lane as of right now.
Interesting.
Can I just make a comment real quick?
Yeah.
So I think it's hard right now, too, because it's a construction zone. So ideally, people wouldn't be walking up and down Patriots Lane. It would be, like Matt said, an internal connected walking area. So right now, I mean, there's dump trucks and excavators and a million people down there working because they've got significant construction going on. So it won't always be like that. But like Matt said, sending people to two busy roads that don't have sidewalks isn't necessarily.
That makes sense. I guess in my brain, I'm thinking of, there was a comment about children getting off on a school bus, or being able to walk around. If that, if we have people flying them down that road, then it's not safe. You would need to have a sidewalk option for safety, period. I mean, you're not gonna walk from Main Street to Jagger Mill because there's nothing on either side for them to get to, except if they were going to go home.
I just don't think we can require it here, since they're not the only business that uses that road. And it's not part of this project.
I think I would disagree with that. I think, given, that's a very high-density area, and there's a lot, there's a lot of people there. I think we really, I think the city really needs to take a look at the pedestrian infrastructure.
I agree.
The city is spending millions of dollars right outside the windows here to improve the pedestrian infrastructure.
You just said the city. I mean, we're talking about the approval for this development, and.
Well, we're moving the area of development down to South Sanford, so we're increasing the need on that end of the city.
But to Jace's point, like, the properties on, the development on Jagger Mill Road itself are not part of this discussion, right? They're gonna connect through the backside of the lot. But think of it, let's just say that it's a different owner. I don't know if it is or not. If it is a different owner, we wouldn't go back and say, well, in this project, we're gonna make this owner, this new, this owner of this development, put sidewalks in. So I think it's worth a discussion. I just don't know how we have, what kind of vehicle we have to have that type of discussion here with regards to Jagger Mill Road, because this is a Main Street development that's going to have another connection onto Jagger Mill Road. So if we wanted to put sidewalks on the access road, that, I think we have an option. There are some things we can discuss.
We did require this, the Paco development, one street down, we did require sidewalks, and they did put them in.
But they owned everything on that, and that development was right against the street.
And I know at the time, the planning board, we had a discussion about improving pedestrian access on Jagger Mill Road as well. That was the discussion that we had.
Yeah.
And I believe it's a worthy discussion. I just, I think it's outside of the bounds of this, because.
I think they first have to figure out who owns the road.
But I think that's a big problem.
That's what I was just gonna chime in with, too, just.
But that's why I brought it.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of ifs.
If the city owns it, then the city will have to make the decision if they want to pay for it. If, if it's private ownership, I still don't think we can require the developer in this case to put a sidewalk in.
Require? Probably not, but it's worth bringing up.
It's actually, it's something that, that may come up with the expanded traffic study. So I've been in conversation with the, with the developer and the, and the engineers and everything. And basically, my comments with the, with the traffic study that's been submitted so far was there were, there were a couple holes in it, one being it didn't really address the capacity analysis. So it broke down the trips generated, site distance, a lot of things that are included in a, in a traffic analysis. But the big thing is the, the capacity analysis, and basically, with this added traffic, can the roads and sidewalks and, because, because part of a full traffic analysis is, you know, study on, on multimodal, being pedestrians, bicycles, you know, all of it. So there is a safety portion of, of the traffic analysis that is, you know, still yet to be, to be talked about. And unfortunately, a lot of the time, in cases like this, especially older ones where things may have fell through the cracks with, you know, road associations and stuff like that, if it is private. Unfortunately, a lot of the time, it's kind of like the last man in, kind of has to deal with all the tough stuff. And, you know, that may be, this may be an example of that.
I think it's worth looking into. It's worth talking about, because these are, these are, they're buildings that are gonna have a lot of pedestrian traffic, and it's gonna bring in probably a demographic of families, so you're looking at at least, you know, a family of four, et cetera. So as we continue to approve these apartment buildings, these are things we have to think about.
There's a lot of businesses within, walking distance of this. There's restaurants and ice cream shops and.
I mean, all I'm saying is I don't think there's a mechanism, I don't think we can approve or deny it based on the sidewalks on.
I agree. I agree. It's just bringing it up for the sake of conversation.
Matt touched on the traffic study. What is the trigger for the traffic study?
There are several triggers in our code. However, a traffic impact analysis could be requested by the board for any project that involves the creation of 40 or more parking spaces, according to 275-21G4. This has, yes, this has 162 parking spaces.
In just the new development.
In just the new development.
All right, so I think we, I think that's something we really should consider, is that, invoking that. I'll leave it up to the board to have that discussion.
No, I agree.
The other piece that I want to just bring up before I forget about it, the open space discussion, you were talking about that once you join the two, you'll have enough. I don't think that counts, right?
I think we have enough just on the new lot as well.
Okay, so I'd wanna be, I'd wanna see that. I'd wanna see that, that standard was met.
Yep.
Because, yeah, well, future, I promise I'll join the two and it'll have enough. I don't think that's gonna fly here, and nothing against you, it's just.
Yep.
I think that that's a, that's a little bit of a gap. All right. So putting a pin in the traffic study for a second, which we'll talk about, the pedestrian traffic, is what it sounds like. Anything else that we want? Anything, any other comments, questions from the board?
I'll go again if no one else has anything else. I don't want to, like, trump the questions. It was brought up by one of the abutters, a privacy fence against a golf course. So I agree with that, because I, I can only imagine the, well, the unwanted foot traffic that is, that does not have permission to be on that property. So do you have a plan to concede to that?
At this point, we haven't shown anything, but it's something I can discuss with the applicant. I'm sure he'd be willing to compromise on something, whether it be splitting the cost of a fence or some other control measures.
I think that would be a really good idea. So I appreciate that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this, when we had this inventory analysis discussion, there was a concern from an abutter on Main Street with the road coming out. Wasn't it with lights coming in? And then we talked about that that was going to be the secondary access point. Was that, did I remember this correctly?
So there was a concern from an abutter on Main Street, but it's, it's never been intended to be an access point. They are, it is proposed that they are gonna own a 50-foot-wide strip of land to Main Street, but it was never intended to be an access point, but an abutter did have concerns because other commercial uses, meaning the York County Teachers Federal Credit Union, the drive-through lights shine in her house, so she was worried about more lights doing the same.
Okay, so that brings another question. How many access points does this development have?
Two.
Not including that, or including the main street?
Not including that. So it's coming in from two, currently two separate map and lot numbers, each with three buildings on it. They're, they're gonna combine all three lots into one, so it's a big, it's a big loop.
Okay.
And Patriots Lane even has two entrances, too, so.
Yeah, I just wanted, I remember all this happening. We had this discussion. I didn't want to, you know, have us have one access point, and we run into the same problem we've had before.
Yes, actually, I was gonna ask if we could see how they all.
I have it up here already.
Awesome.
Ben, could you pull up the podium computer?
Okay.
Do you have an overall site plan that shows the entrances on Patriots?
I don't think, actually. I do have an overall one in this set, but I do have this old plan showing the two lots on Patriots Lane. Say this access here and this access over here, and we'll be extending off of those two parking areas.
Just, just for future, I haven't caught this yet. Subdivision plans, where you are combining all three lots into one, we will need a plan that shows, one plan that shows the whole site.
Yeah, we can have that.
All right.
Yeah, please.
Question about the clubhouse, because I know this is something you expressed interest in at the last meeting. I saw some language in there somewhere that said that clubhouse might be removed. Is that correct?
I did speak with the applicant, and the plan is to keep it. Just for the purpose of this review, we didn't have the correct architectural drawings that aligned with the footprint we showed on this plan. So there was conversation of getting rid of it, but it is the plan to keep it still.
And the angle of the, of the parking driveways are subject to be accessible by the fire trucks, right?
Yep, we have an emergency access plan in here.
Good.
There was just like one driveway that the Sanford Fire Department requested be a little bit wider. That's to the buildings, I believe, four and five, which are the first ones on the left-hand side, as you.
That's what I was, yeah.
Yep, so I think that's in the works. It's in one of our conditions to just meet that, that memo.
Excellent.
Again, we put the fence as a condition of approval. Everybody's.
What fence?
Potentially fence between the golf course and this development.
Well, it's not the golf course. It's vacant property behind the golf course.
Right.
No, it abuts the golf course.
I thought I read it to mean alongside the golf course.
Yeah, I did, too.
They did.
Well, he owns the property in the back.
In the golf course.
People have been going into the apartment complex where it is now and going in there and starting fires and.
But in this, in his email response here, he was talking about the serenity of, for the actual patrons of the golf course, which to me, seemed to indicate he wanted the fence along the golf course.
Yeah. That's how I understood it.
Along the rock wall.
Yeah.
But the golf course?
There's.
Up on the screen, the, the property line right there is the golf course. So the back property line.
Yeah, but it, I don't think the golf course goes back all the way, according to what he was talking about.
Only probably the first building is about where it stops now.
Yeah.
The first building all the way on the left.
Over here.
But during the inventory analysis, he was saying that the current occupants are, or suspected current occupants are already going out on the rear of their course and causing issues.
It's like he has a woodlot or something out there. I remember that now from the INA.
Fences only keep honest people out.
Yep.
Electric fence.
All right. Any other, anything else from the board?
I just have a follow-up to the sidewalk concerns questions. So we've talked about this internally. I've spoken on the phone several times with the person. It's, it's very hard, especially without ownership. It's, I had suggested to her, she could talk to the homeowners association for the condo complex, which fronts on, say, a third to a half, and maybe see if that homeowners association wanted to potentially put some sidewalk in. It's hard. There's multiple owners. If it's public, it's fairly easy to, to give permission for somebody to put a sidewalk on, but if there was never any actual maintenance agreements or anything formed for the street, which there was nothing that we could find, then who actually owns it? Who gives permission to put the sidewalk in? There's, it's a very sticky wicket until true ownership is determined.
The best way to get a sidewalk would be for the city to take ownership of the street, basically, and maybe take some of that land by eminent domain if necessary to put in a sidewalk.
Well, the right-of-way width is always wide enough to put sidewalks in. We require a 50-foot-wide right-of-way, 22-foot-wide typically paved surface, 22, 24, so there's typically plenty of room for a sidewalk within the right-of-way. It's just, again, that, that ownership piece is key here. And it's gonna be key on the traffic study as well. If it's private, there's other things the developer's gonna have to address because it's private as well, so. It would be in the developer's best interest to, to maybe hire a title attorney or something to try to determine ownership, because it's gonna be a decent difference. gonna be a decent difference in what they're required to do if it's public or private.
Isn't that kind of unusual to have that many residents on a private road? That's, there's a lot of people there.
So it's, it's a private road built to public street standards. So, a true private way, you can only have three. So this is a private way built to public street standards, which, again, it is odd, we've, we've maintained it, we plowed it pretty much since inception here. And that, that means nothing, though. We have, we have dozens at this point of streets that are not owned, but handshake deals, and, and there was a bad snowstorm, so we did it once and it just got put on the list type of thing. So there's, there's lots of stuff that has happened over decades. But again, the, the city council just started working on trying to figure out which ones we should be plowing and which ones we shouldn't, and stuff like that.
Well, it wouldn't be a significant burden for the city to take the street down since it's already built to standard.
Well, I can't speak for Public Works, but I can tell you, I've been to many, many, many meetings that this has been discussed. And I won't quote it perfectly, because I don't know it perfectly, but the saying is, we can't afford to maintain the miles of roads we already own. The more miles of roads we, we accept, the, the more money we're gonna have to raise to not only keep them where they're at, but to fix them when they need fixing.
It's a city council issue.
This developer doesn't own the entire property, he doesn't have property on the entire street, does he?
He does not. He owns a good portion of it.
Right, but I mean, you can't, if he's, if we force him to put in sidewalks, he's only gonna put them on his property, which I don't think we can force him to do anyway.
I, I, I am in agreement that, at least at this point, I don't think we could force him to do sidewalks.
I fully believe that this is a city council issue, because they're gonna be the ones that have to adopt the road, purchase the road in order to put sidewalks in, also to expend the funds to put the sidewalks in, which isn't gonna be cheap. I just, I mean, I think it's really gonna be a city council issue.
And last night at council, they did a presentation on, on, I forget the technical term, but the consultant firm that we hired to do an inventory and analysis of our road conditions four years ago, we had it done again this year. And we have invested millions and millions of dollars into our roads, but because of the increased, dramatic increase of cost of construction, to keep going in that same direction, it was estimated we would normally have to put four and a half million dollars a year into our roads to, to slowly build them up. I think they said it's now six-point-two or something, it was, it was substantially higher, not, not to do that much more improvement, but just to stay on course of where we are today. So again, it's, it's becoming very, very expensive to, to maintain city streets. And there's some complicated drainage for this, not necessarily this project, but for the, the big picture project. There's, there's a decent amount of complicated drainage involved.
Is there water and sewer down there?
Yes.
On a private road?
Yep.
Speaking of drainage, if we could discuss briefly, the waiver for the medium-intensity soil survey that the applicant is requesting, so that we know if we're, we are putting that in the motion or not. There's been some discussion that there's proximity to wetlands and ledge on the site, so a soil survey may be needed to alleviate any conflicts with groundwater and stormwater management. That would be something that we would want the applicant to address before the final subdivision application. So if that's something that you would like to see, or you are comfortable with waiving, I think we should determine that tonight as well.
We did have a couple of points on that. As far as the stormwater treatment goes, we aren't proposing to infiltrate any stormwater. It's all just, are daylighted towards that existing swale at the eastern property line. So as far as you need to infiltrate any stormwater, we wouldn't need to look at soils for that. But we did already conduct test pits in all of the filter locations, just to make sure that those systems will work as intended. We have also raised up the elevation of the site by a few feet, just because we expected there to be ledge and groundwater here. So just us raising up the elevations of those buildings and the driveway areas should really keep us out of those existing soils, so they wouldn't be an issue for this project. Those, those were the major reasons for requesting that waiver. We don't think we would get a whole lot of benefit from conducting that.
I guess I would want to talk to the people who understand this better than I do, is the raising of that land, is that going to impact these, any of that, any of the things that we could discover? Is it gonna create a negative impact that we would need to do the soil survey to? I'm looking at my engineering friends.
Yes, I would defer to our assistant city engineer, Matt Preventure.
I'm, I'm not positive what you mean by that, as far as.
Because the, because the land has already been raised that, we've already made modifications to what's there.
Okay.
The concern about the soil, to doing the survey or not doing the survey, does it exist? Does it exacerbate it because of this, this additional fill that's been used to bring up that?
Uh, no, I don't think the concern, well, at least in, in my opinion, I don't think the concern on this site would be the type of soil. So, in other words, if it's unsuitable soil and we were filling on top of it, that obviously wouldn't be a good scenario. But it's not the type of soil that, that's, that's necessarily the concern here, it's the separation to either groundwater or ledge. I know the project next door, they had to blast because there were, there was ledge there. And I think the, the few test pits that were done identified some kind of relatively shallow ledge. So, I think what Drew's getting at is in, in lifting up the, the proposed contours and drainage infrastructure, it's kind of avoiding that, that shallow to refusal, I guess is what it's called. But, I'm not sure, so with the DEP site law permit, I know it's an amendment to site law.
Yep.
But typically with a site law permit, you'd have to, you'd have to do some pretty extensive testing in each area that, that has proposed drainage. So, will that be the case here, or is the amendment process more lax?
It would just be the test pits and the filter locations, which we've already done.
Oh, okay.
It's the same thing for that permit.
Was there only, because I know there was three test pits, was there more than, was there only?
I think we have four filters.
Oh, okay.
One of them was on ledge, so he didn't even bother trying to dig there.
Makes sense. Okay, I, I thought there were more areas with proposed drainage.
And I think another typical reason for that soil survey is if there's gonna be onsite wastewater disposal, septic fields, which we aren't proposing, so that wouldn't be an issue for this one either.
Are you doing a wetland crossing for one of the access drives?
Those weren't determined to be wetlands. The only wetland is between the southern and northern sections of the buildings. There's kind of an existing, like riprap concrete channel that runs between the, the two adjacent properties, but those weren't considered wetlands.
Right, but the, the proposed access road, what are these building numbers? Trying to zoom in, it just won't let me. The proposed access road between.
I guess, yeah, there, there's a small strip of wetland there.
Yeah, exactly. I think you were proposing like a rock sandwich type.
Yep, that's right.
Build up of that?
Yep.
So as far as, as far as soil testing in that area, I mean, it is a wetland, they're proposing, I won't say a common, but an accepted best management practice through DEP to create a road through there. My, I did bring up a concern in my comments with the underground utilities through that. I just, I wasn't sure how that was gonna work, but that was something that we were working through. Yeah, as far as, as far as how it relates to the soil testing, I don't think that area would be of, of concern. We know it's a wetland, we know it would be not great soils, so I don't think soil testing would tell us much more. But we will have to work through how to deal with that crossing. But again, you know, the DEP permitting is gonna kinda also piggyback on whatever we're looking at, so.
So you're okay with a waiver?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I, I didn't, when I originally brought it up, I, I wasn't sure that there would, there were test pits in every drainage location, but it sounds like, sounds like there are, so.
Okay. Right, any, anything else? Any other comments or concerns right now from the planning board? So I think we still have, we have to lay in the plane on the privacy fence, if that's something we want to add as a condition. And the traffic study, which I think that we're, we're warranted for asking for.
Yep.
Based on the number of parking spots, and then the concerns with that neighborhood.
Depending on the results of that traffic study, who would be responsible for any recommendation?
Well, so this is a preliminary subject, it's a preliminary.
True.
So we're gonna have to come back, and part of that, I believe part of that will include the traffic study results.
Okay.
On, on that note, the developer, Ken Weinstein, has asked for some creative ways to address that. I don't know if you want to discuss that. He, he asked if potentially he could put money in a performance guarantee type of situation. I think he's worried about timing and recent middle for final. I think he's trying to turn and burn this, this plan. So he did put a request in to maybe consider money in lieu of doing a full study. Again, I, I think that might be a mute point, because depending on ownership of road, he, he might have to do it through MDOT anyways, in which case we couldn't even pretend to offer any deals through MDOT. But again, I, I, I wouldn't suggest accepting a performance guarantee yet. If they, if they start the process, talk to MDOT, which I strongly suggest you do, and have that discussion with them, and it turns out good in their favor on that front, then maybe they can discuss it with you guys at round two. But at this point, I would, I would recommend we keep it in there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think I do too, because we wouldn't know what to even.
Yeah.
Set the guarantee at, because I think that, there's enough concern here that we have to, we have to look into it, so.
Absolutely, definitely.
Alright, anything, anything else from the board?
We had to talk about the fence.
I'm sorry?
We had to talk about the fence.
Okay. Do, I mean, I think it's down, do we, do we add it to a condition that they add?
That's, yeah, I didn't think we had a consensus yet. Do we?
I say yes.
Your defense, yeah.
Yeah.
What?
Add it to the condition?
No, not really.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not really for it, as much as I'd wanna be, it's.
Why?
There's no standard for them to add a fence.
Right.
So how do we have a condition?
So.
That's not even a standard, like we.
So to go down this path, I mean, we, we could talk buffering, right? And fencing is a form of buffering, but we're not even talking about other options.
Well, fencing in this case is not, it's not for buffering.
Right. It's not visual buffering, it's access buffering.
Yeah.
We're trying to prevent access.
People go around it, I mean, I gotta.
Yeah, you can just walk around, yeah.
Eight-foot woven wire fence that people can actually climb over if they want to.
What was the comments on the letter from that property owner? I thought he said he wanted some kind of a buffer, did I, did I hear that wrong?
There's two parts, there's the visual screening.
That's a buffer.
And then also to keep people from entering the property.
I believe the request was for a seven-foot tall privacy fence.
Privacy.
Yep.
I think it's worth exploring, I think.
I think it's worth a conversation for the applicant and.
That's what I was thinking. I, I didn't want to put the requirement in there that they have to put the fence in, I'd like it, do they have the discussion?
What's the back length of the property?
I don't know if we have it shown on here. It is about six hundred feet.
Six hundred feet. So you think people might be able to walk around that? Because he's not gonna extend it on someone else's property.
Yeah.
It's more a restriction of access to it, because most people aren't gonna walk like, you know, too lazy to walk like fifty feet to go around a fence, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, if it's like, if it's a specific area, he's trying to block off a thing, you know, it's feasible, or like, you know, reasonable, but if he's tomorrow doing all six hundred feet, then no.
It's actually closer to twelve hundred feet, sorry.
Twelve hundred?
So on, on the screen he just had up, it shows an existing trail that starts out on the developer's property, goes on to the golf course property. The developer already mentioned that he was potentially gonna do some trails and stuff on their property. So, potentially if they discontinue that trail, maybe put signage, do not enter private property, no trespass, and, and provide the trails on their own property, maybe that could be a, I'm not gonna say an end-all solution, but they've already said they're okay with trails. Right now, the trail goes on to the neighbor's property, so if they discontinue that and actually gave people somewhere to walk on their property, maybe that would discourage use on the entrepreneur's property.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna talk about any type of trail development, we would not want it to cross on the, onto that. You know, this is obviously not a sanctioned trail today.
Oh, no.
But we're not gonna, yeah, it should be discontinued, blocked off with whatever to prevent, or to at least dissuade people from using it. So I agree with that. Yeah, twelve hundred feet of fence is a lot, and.
At least it would be a buffer from, from the golf course, so people from the golf course wouldn't be.
We can add a natural buffer though, too, correct, for a requirement?
So, our ordinance does require a vegetated buffer, but I'm pretty sure there, there's a decent chunk of land behind those units, right?
Yeah, it's twenty feet.
Only twenty feet?
Sorry, there.
Well, I think that's what's attracting people to go there. They're having their.
I, I just have a question of whose responsibility it is, I, I don't know. I don't know any other, other than when we had conditions of approval, when the city steps in and decides how, you know, you provide, you know, like, I don't like my neighbor who's responsible for the, I don't make them put my fence up.
Right.
So, I mean, as much as I.
You understand.
Yeah. I hate making this argument, but.
We did this with the Nassau project, I think we required a fence.
Yeah. And I'm okay when it's through, it's in between two different zones, because I do think there might be a standard for that. Because I know we also discussed the fence when we talked behind the South Sanford McDonald's and that whole development. But.
So it's, it's always easy to have the discussion when it's a, a commercial project going in against a residential project.
Correct.
In this case, it's a residential project going in against a commercial project.
Correct. I mean, I'd like them to talk, because again, you want neighbors to have a good relationship. I still have issues with, you know, people build next to golf courses, and then people hit their houses with golf balls. You know, and so then who has the liability is a kind of always the question. You know, and how do you handle that? That's probably gonna be something that's gonna pop up, but I don't know if that's our purview.
Well, could we put it as a condition pending a conversation, and then see where you land when you come back? Is that possible?
I was gonna read my suggestion.
That's my, I'd like to see them come to a resolution.
The, Ken, Ken is always willing to work with, with people. He's, he's a good developer. So I think if you make a condition that he discusses with the owner of the golf course, and see if they can come up with a amicable solution that works for all parties.
Yeah.
I like that. So.
Is that satisfying? Everyone? Perfect.
Alright.
Are you running out of room to write on your paper?
No.
Do you have findings on this as well?
No, this is prelim, we don't do.
We don't have them, I didn't think so. Okay.
So do we motion to?
So there are still several other conditions that we have suggested. I can just read those through as part of the suggested motion, or we can discuss those points as well ahead of time.
Can you bullet point them?
I sure can.
Just see if we wanna discuss them.
Um, I think we've hit, some of them are just updating some minor discrepancies on the site plan. The clubhouse, it sounds like, is coming back around, so that will be fine. Recreational opportunities, I'm not sure that we came to a conclusion there. There is some evidence in the code that a requirement of ten percent of space in. There is some evidence in the code that a requirement of 10% of space in a development be dedicated to recreation and open space in subdivisions. So currently, the applicant has indicated the open space at the northern corner of the site will be used for a patio slash barbecue area. The proposed area of disturbance for this development is roughly 130,000 square feet. Sanford's code requires 10% of space be dedicated to recreation and open space in subdivisions. The current barbecue area is roughly 4,000 square feet of the necessary 13,000 square feet. Additional recreational space is requested to support a high quality of life for the residents of the proposed 96 dwelling units. So this doesn't account for the clubhouse area, 'cause it was still under, up, up for debate, I guess, whether or not that would be included. But we do want, this is a large area and a large number of units, so we do want you all to kind of consider what is going on the site to support those residents.
I don't believe that 4,000 square foot number included the trails around the site, and it also didn't include the area that will be maintained as lawn around that patio area, so like an outdoor games area type situation.
So on final, can you just make sure you quantify the actual open space availability?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think the trail route was one of those minor dimensional things that we had listed also, because it had stated in the narrative that the trail would be rerouted through the site, but then on the site plan, it's, it's not really shown, so...
Okay.
In addition to behind, where we're talking about the subutter, but there's another trail that kind of crosses through the access drive, and then just terminates, so...
Is that 10% just on this property, or does that include when they merge all three?
We did the calculations just on this property. We, we debated back, we discussed back and forth a little bit whether we could go back and make them change the approved site plans on the ones that are approved 15 years ago. We, we didn't know if that was quote-unquote fair, so we, we did our calculations based upon the new development.
Yeah. I, I agree with that, I think, but I do think we need to ignore the fact that the plan is, as I said earlier, we should pretend like they're not gonna join them. If they join them later, that's their prerogative, but right now, it's, it's not part of this discussion, it's something they may do, so it shouldn't be considered as part of the calculation, I don't think.
In addition to kind of recreation and open space, there's some discussion about landscaping and the amount of landscaping that is proposed on site, especially considering the amount of tree clearing that's needed for the site. So additional landscaping in the form of street trees and foundation plantings would be preferred. Street trees along the access drive should be spaced no more than 50 feet apart to provide adequate shade to residents. So there's a little bit of, a significant, I would say, stretch that's combining the existing development with the proposed, and there's a long stretch there. There is a sidewalk shown and some landscaping, but they're not trees. And our subdivision ordinance does say that when you're crossing a field with a new subdivision, that street trees should be placed no more than 50 feet apart.
Okay.
Some other, other topics, do you wanna talk on there?
Pause here for a second. Not necessarily about this, right? These are the things that we're talking about, because, I mean, these are basically, these are the standards, right? So we're just talking about the standards, and we think there may be some room to make this project meet these standards. So we're just recognizing these, these are not, we're not adding these as conditions, right? We're just saying they meet the standard.
I mean, I have it drafted as conditions, but yeah.
So I mean, I have a little bit of an issue with that, because if, yeah. I guess this is a preliminary, so we have time to make it right, we're not really approving it with any conditions.
Typically, the preliminary approval lists the deficiencies that we found during the prelim stage. We're not, we're not saying you have to do anything, we're listing the deficiencies that of the standards that were noted.
And they could always request a waiver when a waiver is allowed. Right.
Correct.
Whatever they choose to do.
And I think we talked during site plan, there's, there's one spot where the 50-foot spacing might not work out because of utilities and wetlands. Obviously, if you can't do it, you can't do it, but if you can do it, you should.
You have to, right? It's a standard.
Unless you request a waiver, but that, that, I was following up with the waiver of, if there's an extenuating circumstance.
The wa, we would waive it in those areas.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page here. Okay. Please, Aaron.
Suggested motion?
Yeah.
Or keep going.
Can we do the suggested motion?
I mean, we, we all have this, we all received it, you're, you're hitting all the points. Does anybody have any issues with, with what's been provided to us? Well, you know, a lot of the standard stuff, fire, safety, NOx boxes, et cetera. All right. Let's go ahead with the motion. Suggested motion, please.
Sure. That the planning board accepts the information in the August 15th, 2023 summary report, grant the requested waivers, and find that the proposed preliminary subdivision application file number R15-60 to construct five multifamily apartment buildings along with residential amenities and associated site improvements has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. One, in the final major subdivision application, provide revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, the applicant updates the site plan to correctly display parking amounts, dumpster, enclosure, dimensions, and trail route. B, the applicant determines the size and location of the clubhouse and provide the corresponding site plan and/or elevations. C, the applicant provides a sufficient recreational opportunities to accommodate and support the 96 dwelling units. D, the applicant increases the amount of landscaping provided on site by adding street trees a maximum of 50 feet apart and foundation plantings along the front facade of the buildings. E, the applicant adds a note to the plan indicating that all buildings will have a fire sprinkler system installed, and update the site plan to show the fire department connections and NOx box locations on each building. F, the applicant updates the site plan to provide adequate emergency vehicle access to all buildings to the satisfaction of the Sanford Fire Department. G, the applicant submit a full traffic analysis and letter of concurrence from main DOT with the final submission. H, the applicant show, submit evidence of an agreement with the subutter of parcel R15-59. Is that enough? Okay. I, address all items brought up in the Assistant City Engineer memo dated July 31st, 2023 to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. J, address all items brought up in the Sanford Water District memo dated July 27, 2023 to the satisfaction of the Sanford Water District. And K, address all items brought up in the Sanford Sewerage District memo dated July 31st, 2023 to the satisfaction of the Sanford Sewerage District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aaron, I had one question on that. So I think we discussed it a bit earlier. Would it be possible to have that results of the traffic study as a condition of approval for the final approval? Or is that something we'll need coming into the, the next meeting?
I think it's something we're looking to have.
Yeah.
For the, before, or in support of that, the, the final.
Correct.
All right, so we have a second. Any discussion by the board? All in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Good luck on your project, you've got a little bit of work ahead of you, but...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good, looks like a good project.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to other business, planning directors' reports.
I spoke with Beth Delavelli this week, the mental extraction ordinance is very near completion. Well, the, the amendments are very near completion to be able to bring it back to you guys. Erin is working on LD 2003 amendments, as well as her clusters, not...
Conservation. Conservation subdivision.
Conservation subdivision stuff, we're probably gonna do that at the same time, 'cause it's similar in idea. And in her spare time after that, she's trying to do a little bit with the comp plan, to, to try to keep that slowly moving forward.
Right. Anything else, Jamie?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
No, we gotta do communications. All right, so anybody have anything to bring up from, just in the communications area? I have something, but I want Matt to be here, so...
We'll have to go to the men's room and talk to him.
Always that one.
Anyways, well, I'll, I'll bring it up now and he can catch up. I, this is, you know, I know we had a lot of discussion on parking, I think that it, while it's not really in our purview, I think we have to start poking this to understand what is the plan going forward. This is a big problem. Multiple projects, we've had this discussion, parking is an issue in downtown, even with that one in particular, Pioneer Ave is constantly full of cars. That's an adjacent road, so it's right there. It isn't ours, right? This isn't ours to fix, but these discussions need to happen. So I'd really be interested in where that, the, the public works project is going, perhaps whatever they're doing to kind of go study this and try to figure out what's gonna be next. But then who ends up being responsible to push this in? 'Cause I don't believe it's us.
Didn't they have a plan to put a parking garage?
Let's say that's the raise grant. So there is some sort of plan to at least help with the parking, it's not gonna address the complete issue. But I think it's worth bringing up during these applicants or applications, because these are things that we have to take into consideration.
Yeah, at some point, if it gets bad enough, I can't support having any waivers, or have to look closely at them. I mean, I go to other cities that have worse parking situations, Bitterford, Rochester, some of their downtown areas, and you wanna go to a business down there? Forget about it.
There he is. Welcome back.
Well, you know, even in, in my neighborhood, we have apartment buildings, and they probably have never had the right parking available to them since the outset. I don't wanna see a fire truck go down my street. That's a concern. So Matt, we just gave you a bunch of ta, tasks to do. Figure out parking for downtown.
Fix it.
So can you, can you talk about the raise grant with the parking plan? That's changed since the last time we even had this conversation, but...
Yeah, I don't remember the exact figures as far as what's being added versus what's being eliminated. I, I, it could be a balance, I honestly, I can't remember. We're, we're definitely eliminating some, though, just to make, 'cause the street configurations, the way that they lay out, and the available width and everything, it, it, yeah, it could be, it could be a balance, based on the, so I, I don't think, but parking isn't, I wouldn't say it's going to improve as far as the numbers go with the raise grant, but I'd say that it's, it's fair to say that functionality is going to improve, just because it's a, it's a new configuration, a new design, so it's, it's meant to work, as opposed to just kind of free-for-all, but...
When Jim Galneck was planning director, they had an idea of putting in a parking garage.
I was just about to ask about if you can't go up, go up.
That's still being discussed. It's, right now, all the park-in studies we've had done thus far say we do not have a park-in problem. I've, I've talked with Erin a lot about parking, and if, if anything, a lot of communities are reducing their park-in requirements, because, I'll let her take it from there, but because studies have found that, that people don't have as many car, we're, we're becoming a city. Right now, we're, we're transitioning from a town to a city, and cities do have people that don't have vehicles, and I feel personally that public transportation has to catch up.
Yeah. I was gonna say, if you, if that is the direction, then what's the plan for public transportation?
Yeah, I, I would imagine that would be a larger conversation that happens, again, during the comprehensive plan process, but also I think this downtown study would come up with some recommendations. A lot of inner-city neighborhoods, urban areas, like downtown Sanford is, have implemented parking permits, residential permits for street parking, that could potentially address part of the problem at least, because it, you know, alleviates the issue where residents don't have a place to park at night when they come home from work, and they make sure they have that, and then we can designate more areas that are specific for businesses, or you can have areas that have, you know, limited time limits for parking. I would probably defer to this parking study, because it's already in the works first, before we come up with any recommendations, but in general, it's not easy to, to find parking in downtown areas, you know? It's not, we're not in the suburbs. It's, we don't, every car that exists in a city generally has three to five parking spaces allotted to it at all times, and it's only using one of those spaces at a time. So there's four empty parking spaces for every car in the city of Sanford. So yeah, it's gonna be more difficult to find parking in Sanford, in downtown Sanford at least, than it is if you're going to South Sanford and going to a big box retail store. That's just kind of the way it is. And people that choose to live in downtown areas choose to live there a lot of times because they're within walking distance of businesses, restaurants, possibly employment, and therefore if they have a spot allotted to them in their own, at their own residence, or on the street that they live on through a residential parking permit, then they may not have to move their car unless they're going somewhere on the weekends.
Yeah.
I would start if a city tried to sell parking permits.
I think that's a pretty typical growing pain that cities go through. I understand it won't be easy.
That would be interesting to watch.
Yeah. So again, I don't think it's our call, but we're in, we're kind of putting this between a rock and a hard place.
Yep.
We're being asked to uphold a standard that in many cases just can't be met.
So one of the standards in, in the plan is that they have to show an example of other areas that they've done it, or in the region it's been done. We could kind of push that more, if you'd like.
So I, I think it's definitely worth exploring, but on the other side of that, I wanna, I mean, if it is truly, there's not a parking issue, the parking study tells us X, Y, and Z, which means the standard can be reduced.
Right.
We're not making a call to basically make the problem, potentially make the problem worse. And I'm not necessarily saying this project, right?
Right.
But it's other, we're gonna hear more of these. So I think that makes sure we're in a place where we can fairly apply the rule, right? And, and not just, you know, strike the rule or reduce the rule, even though we do have a waiverable condition.
I, I think you guys are correct in, in having a conversation, because I think every project that's been approved since I've been sitting here has requested a waiver. So they are performing another park-in study. I think it would be great to get the results of that. Now, that's on-street parking is what they're doing a study on, and public lots, so that doesn't help during snowbands. And the city last winter did some changes on where you can park during snowbands. We've quote-unquote cleaned out backstreet grills parking lot, there was a lot of long-term tenants of the parking lot, I'd say. So we did have, we changed our ordinance to make it so that we could tow them. So we are monitoring the city-owned lots to try to keep it so they are short-term parking as they're intended, which I'm not gonna pretend and say that's enough to solve our problem, it's not. But we, the, the city council, the city in general is, is thinking about parking. The goal is to make our downtown hopping 14 hours a day, and, well, people will, people will walk a distance, you, they need to get here somehow. So we are, we are actively discussing the park-in situations.
Okay. So I think we, I think we beat this up, and we're not gonna solve it tonight. So any other communications anybody wants to discuss?
No.
All right.
Can you do it?
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn?
Check it!
(laughing).